All right, we'll call the meeting to order and stand for the pledge. All right, first up, we have the consent agenda, which includes minutes from all of the last meetings. Council minutes from April 29th, our city's facility tour. The council meeting of May 6th, along with the board of review meeting from May 6th. Community Center Commission meeting from May 11th. Library Board, May 12th. The EDA Board, May 12th. Planning Commission, May 13th, and the Street Committee meeting on May 15th. There are also three liquor license applications from the Wyndham Baseball Association. Wine on sale, beer on sale, and strong beer authorization, along with the regular bills. Does anyone make a motion or have any questions, amendments, changes, anything?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, is there any discussion?
Question. Just out of curiosity, baseball association, where do they sell their, have their sales at for these?
Yep, so this is the first time. They are asking to have license for their, the first time, and then they would sell at their Pirates games. And there'd be inside the fence out of their concession stand.
Do we have a, like, would we have a, somebody down there policing, not policing, but fires ID and stuff like that?
They, they're, just like any other bar or restaurant, they're responsible for that activity. And there are compliance checks that are done randomly.
Okay, thank you.
I did also speak to both Mike Jackson and Jim Garrison today. I thought I was calling Jim and spoke to Mike and then did talk to Jim. And they, they have talked to Jamie Frank at the school, so this is not going to be anything that's served at, you know, not high school games. Jamie checked with the Minnesota High School State League. And they, it'll be served at the Legion and the Pirates games, which are like 16 to 20 games a season. And when the high school games are playing, I think they'll have it behind Lock and Key and covered. So, because you can't show alcohol at a high school game. So, it sounded to me like they had their bases covered. So, I asked if they were going to be here tonight, in that case, if there is questions like this, and they're not. So, I just wrote down what they told me, but.
I guess, I had no question about whether they do it right, because I think they will. But I just didn't know that they were going to do that. I, because that's the only place they could, I guess, that, so.
Is there any further discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next up, any department heads that aren't on the agenda elsewhere that would like to speak? Kari Hansen from the library.
Hello. Just to remind everybody that we have our summer reading program coming up starting June 2nd. And the theme is Level Up. And we have from all ages, infant on all, all the way up. So, we encourage everyone to come in with their children and sign up and earn some prizes and treats. And we look forward to everybody participating. Thank you.
Thank you, Kari. Any other department heads? Tim Snyder with the Community Center.
I just want to remind people that on Monday of Memorial Day, there will be a Memorial Day program at the Community Center, 10:30, put on by the Legion here in town.
Thank you, Tim. Any other department heads? Okay. Moving on, we've got Mr. Mike Laurie here for public comment. And Mike has submitted the form that is required and... Mike, I know we spoke earlier today and that, and so this time allows for five minutes for you to speak to the council. And if you are good and ready, we will start with that.
Okay, good evening. Good to see you all again. I'm here to, I'm here to speak about the vaccine injury issue again. And I just wanted to give you a little context where I come. And I told Hillary I'll try and be as succinct as I can. I owe a, I owe a debt of gratitude to the city of Wyndham and Cottonwood County. I came back here to my home county after a pretty serious injury and was able to work my way back into and be the main reporter for the Cottonwood County citizen. And so, and it allowed me to, to discover some things about this. And many of you know that, and I'm speaking to the citizens of Wyndham who may not know this. I gave up my job over a vaccine injury censorship issue because I believe the story should be told. And I never got the chance to write and say clearly, but I'd like to say to the people of Wyndham, I wouldn't enforce any of, I believe in freedom of choice and freedom of will. But after the careful study I've done now for six months, six months ago, I offered a lot of information to this city council. And perhaps an overwhelming amount of information, because in this day and age, it's hard to sort out how everything goes. But I think six months later, the first city council came, meeting I came to was, was coinciding with President Trump's first week of office. And it happened to be that on that day, his second day of office, he, they signed a half a trillion dollar deal to privatize and go forward with more variations of this mRNA vaccination that I talked about that night. And I asked the city to ban it. Especially for 18-year-olds, for children, for people, at least for a year, because I don't believe it's safe or effective. And I think the, 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 the body of evidence is so overwhelming and damning now that I don't know how anybody who's done the intellectual work and the moral work to face the issue could say that the vaccine is safe and effective and that it should still be given to people. However, at the federal, I want, what I wanted to say to the people of Wyndham, and I don't tell anybody what to do. This is in my, in my humble opinion, please do not take this vaccine, any more boosters, any more shots. And you can call me personally if you want more background on this, because we don't have time. And I've published stuff on Substack, the same stuff I've given to the city council. I'll give you a lot of evidence to that end, and I say this toward your goodwill and for your children and your grandchildren and the people who have not yet been injected with this thing. I just ask you, please, please carefully consider before you put this into a child, because it's irreversible. And now we know that the spike protein that is made by the vaccine does not stop being made. They find it in corpses. They find it years later, they find it throughout the body, okay? You can't take it back. There are things you can do, praise God, that they can ameliorate some of the effects of it and help you with the symptoms. But you can't take it back because you've changed your immune system. And that's an offense, in my opinion, against God Almighty and the immune system and the unbelievable, beautiful system that he's given to us, which we were deceived on. So, that, that, that's one of the reasons I wanted to come back one last time. I just wanted to say to my friends and the people I love in Wyndham and in Cottonwood County and all, anybody who can listen, please, please do not take that, because it has not unfortunately been banned anywhere. And they've put a couple of things before Congress to do it. But I can tell you this, they're not, they've got too much money involved in it, and the system does not say it's sorry. Because there's so much liability and money at stake over the liability for these vaccine injuries. They're not going to do it the way it appears. Maybe by the grace of God, we'll get a miracle and it will happen. But we're five months in now to Trump's term, and I think the forces that are stacked against it are pretty, are pretty formidable. The state, Tim Walz, if you think he's going to do it, I have some land in Arizona on an oceanfront property. It'll never happen. So, so why do I come to the city council? Because local government is the only agency we have left and hospital boards and people who own it. And so, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll wind my way down, but why, why personally did I come? As a Christian, I started getting numb myself, because this is what, this is what Matthew 24 says. It says that, "In the days of peril that will come and the end of, end of times of this world, which we may or may not be approaching or be in, which I happen to believe we probably are, lawlessness will abound, where people are not held accountable for sins. They're not, they won't repent, they won't apologize, they'll do whatever they want to do. And nobody will be held accountable for it." I woke up in the middle of the night and I started to feel numb myself. I thought about all these little kids and I, I remembered, you know what? If I saw a doctor, if I saw a doctor and nurse, and I love these people, if I saw them in front of me injecting anybody's kid in this community, I'd have to go to jail.
Mike, our five minutes are up.
Okay.
We appreciate you being here. Thank you.
I have one more thing to say. I, I want to ask you, here's what I want you to do. I know you're not going to ban it, you should. You should ban it, you have the power to do it and you should use it. Call a town hall. You called a town hall on the traffic situation on, on, on the state over the idea of having, you know, what, what the state is trying to enforce on you with this traffic situation in Wyndham. And you called a town hall, people came out and gave their opinion, and you got over 30 people that stood up and did it. Ask the people of Wyndham and Cottonwood County to come and say, should we ban this vaccine for people 18 years or younger? Tell, use your power and ask the people to speak. And I bet they'll come and I bet they'll speak, and at least you'll know what people think. So, I would ask you to do that.
Thank you, Mike. Have a good night, thank you so much.
I wanted to make one more book recommendation. The Holy Bible is always my first one. Proverbs 3 is the one I gave to all of you at the start of this, and I wonder if you've carefully read through that. Go back and read Proverbs 2 as well while you're doing that. Because what it says is, when you ask God, when you've ignored his commands and you've ignored repenting and doing his will and taking care of people, he says he'll laugh in your face when you come to him. That's a heart, that's not on the Hallmark card at Christmas, but it's in the Bible. It's in Proverbs 2, so I would revisit that. And Scott, I was thinking about you with this book. This is, this is by Jaco Willink, the Navy SEAL. Do you know this book? It's called Extreme Ownership. And what it means is, somebody has to take responsibility. And then, and the federal government's not going to do it, and the state government's not going to do it. You can do it and we'll help you. God bless you.
Thank you, Mike. Up next on the agenda is number four, a resolution accepting a donation to the Wyndham Municipal Airport from Lori Cole. And Scott, would you like to introduce the resolution and explain it?
Yeah, I'll introduce the resolution to accept the donation from Lori Cole and John Lachin family for the Wyndham Airport painting.
Hold a second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second on the resolution, and we need to take a roll call on this.
Benson, I was abstaining because I'm the manager of the airport. Espen.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Right, wonderful. So, we have that resolution, and we thank Lori Cole for the donation. The paperwork here says the donation is valued at $350 in memory of her father, John Lachin. So, that is wonderful, thank you, Lori. Next up is number five, the Planning Commission recommendations. And we have Matt Fass, who's the building and zoning, building and zoning head guy here. Thank you, Matt. Yes, thank you.
CUP application for a billboard on 2270 Highway 60, which is a hotel property. Applicants Summit Locations of Gordon, Ohio and Windstream Inn's LLC, property owner, filed an application requesting a conditional use permit to allow the placement of a billboard on the American Hotel property. The billboard structure would be 32 feet in height, would angle out similar to a V, and contain four signs on the structure, two eight-feet-high by 20-feet-long signs on two sides of the structure, and have an open space of 15 feet between the bottom of the billboard and grade level. The signs are wraps and are not letter digital. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this application on April 8th, 2025. At that meeting, the Planning Commission tabled its recommendation to allow for the placement of a new stake on the property to show the site of the column for the proposed billboard. The stake previously placed on the property did not match the location shown on the site plan provided by Summit Locations. At the meeting on May 13th, the Planning Commission reviewed the proposed sign location, information from the public hearing, code requirements, et cetera. The minutes from the May 13th meeting set forth the response received from Minnesota Department of Transportation, the discussion, motion, and findings of fact concerning the Plank, Planning Commission's recommendation to deny this conditional use permit application.
I would like to speak on this. I, I thank you from the Planning and Zoning Commission to, to deny this, because where they wanted to put these signs, that's, it's in a busy part of town, a busy part of the road. And with what we got going on with our road right now, with all, all the truck traffic and car traffic going through town, I feel they would, they would be busy looking at these signs and not paying attention to what they're doing. So, I appreciate what the, the sitting and planning and zoning has done for this, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
So, you're looking for a motion to deny the conditional use permit application?
I'll make a motion to deny the application for the billboards.
For the, just the one on the hotel property, right? We have to do these three separate. So, this is for the one at the Highway 60, 2270 Highway 60 Hotel property.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion?
But I'm going to abstain from voting on this, because we did the surveying for Summit Locations on these three sites. So, I'm going to abstain from voting on these three items.
I just want to say a couple of things. I'm very thankful for the public that came forward and expressed some of their thoughts, and, including Marv Grunig. Some very excellent comments were made, so there's some good, solid background behind denying this. And it's not just about safety, it's also about aesthetics. And all of the opinions really lined up. There was a lot of, a lot of good information, so I'm very confident in supporting this motion.
Does anyone have anything further? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, motion carries. Next up, Matt will explain the conditional use permit application for the billboard at 195 13th Street, which is the Culligan property on Highway 60.
Applicants Summit Locations of Gordon, Ohio and Ritchie G. LLC, the property owner, filed an application requesting a conditional use permit to allow the placement of a billboard on the Culligan property at 195 13th Street. The billboard structure would be 42 feet in height, would angle out similar to a V, and contain four signs on the structure, two eight-feet-high by 20-feet-long signs on two sides of the structure, and have an open space of 25 feet between the bottom of the billboard and grade level. The signs are wraps and are not lit or digital. Planning Commission held a public hearing on this application on April 8th, 2025. At that meeting, the Planning Commission tabled its recommendation to allow for the placement of a new stake on the property to show the site of the column for the proposed billboard. The stake previously placed on the property did not match the location shown on the site plan provided by Summit Locations. At the meeting on May 13th, the Planning Commission reviewed the proposed sign location, information from the public hearing, code requirements, et cetera. The minutes from the May 13th meeting set forth the response received from the Minnesota Department of Transportation, the discussion, motion, and findings of fact concerning the Planning Commission's recommendation to deny this conditional use permit application.
I'll make a motion to deny, to deny the application for the Culligan, 195 13th Street, Culligan property.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second, is there any further discussion?
Again, I want to bring up the, the safety aspect of this, and I appreciate you guys doing, everybody that's worked on this stuff, done their homework, because I feel, my personal feeling is that we have a lot going on coming through town. And the, the highway department themselves said we got a lot of traffic coming through. And if you put something like this up, people get distracted so easily. And just with that kind of billboard, the signage, the, the size of it, it's just going to be a distraction for people. And with that many people coming down that road and all the different vehicles and stuff, tractors and, and too. I mean, there's different, we've got all kinds of farm equipments running up and down this highway. I just feel that at this time, it's just too unsafe for our, our city to do that. And I appreciate the hard work you guys have done to go through this.
I'd like to add a couple of specific things that have come from the public. One is, there is no clear economic benefit to our community. That was one thing that someone mentioned. Another one, I was talking about the extreme heights. One of these signs actually goes up to 40 feet in the air, which is quite high. The aesthetics already mentioned, and it definitely takes away from the memorial park across the street. And some other important things. I thought those, it was such a refreshing thing to hear so many solid comments from the, from the public.
Does anyone else have any discussion? All right, motion made in second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. One more reading for us, Matt, on the property, the salon property at 1375 First Avenue.
Applicants Summit Locations LLC of Gordon, Ohio and Tasha Marsh, property owner, filed an application requesting a conditional use permit to allow the placement of a billboard on the Hair with Flare property at 1375 First Avenue. Billboard structure would be 32 feet in height, would angle out similar to a V, and contain four signs on the structure, two eight-feet-high by 20-feet-long signs on two sides of the structure, and have an open space of 15 feet between the bottom of the billboard and grade level. The signs are wraps and are not lit or digital. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this application on April 28th, 2025. At that meeting, the Planning Commission tabled its recommendation to allow for the placement of a new stake on the property to show the site of the column for the proposed billboard. The stake previously placed on the property did not match the location showed on the site plan provided by Summit Locations. At the meeting on May 13th, the Planning Commission reviews, reviewed the proposed sign location, information from the public hearing, code requirements. The minutes from the May 13th meeting set forth the response received from the Minnesota Department of Transportation, the discussion, motion, and findings of fact concerning the Planning Commission's recommendation to deny this conditional use permit application.
Again, I'll make the motion to, to deny the, accept the denial of the billboard on First Avenue Salon property.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made in second, is there any further discussion?
Hasn't there always been a, a sign up there back in towards the Elk River? It used to be Elk River, not anymore, but... Would advertise for Jackpot Junction or some darn thing at one time.
Yeah, there was one between, I think it's the Key Place, right there, where they make the keys. But I haven't seen that for a while.
But was this the sign going to be where the cow or whatever is?
I think so, yes.
Wasn't that where the sign was going to be, where the cow is?
Again, I want to mention the venue of safety and taking care of our citizens, of people that drive through the town. We want people to be safe coming and going through our town. And something that big and that, that distraction, I mean, it's hard to keep your eyes concentrated on the road nowadays with all the phones and gadgets you got in your cars, and you put something like that up. And where's your eyes going to go? First thing, they're going to go up beside you looking at the road. Just my own personal feeling, but I, I do, again, want to thank you guys for doing diligent and working hard on helping the citizens of Wyndham. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Matt. Steve is now going to lead us through the resolution declaring intent to reimburse from the bond proceeds for the 2025 street project.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Yep, at the last couple of council meetings, the city councils voted to move ahead with the 2025 street project. The project estimate, I believe, in the feasibility study had a high end of 1.2 million and a probable cost of about $700,000 for the option that was selected. That kind of a bond issue is on, on the small side, to issue a bond to pay for that project when it comes up later this year. What this is, this is a resolution of intent to reimburse ourselves. So, down the line, we can include this project and wrap it into maybe the 2026 project when the bonds are issued for that. So, we only have to do one issuance cost with the legal and with the bond council and with the Elers and those folks. And so, we still have the option to do bonds for this project, if you so choose to do that later this year, to do a small issue. You know, we also have another project out there is the Island Park, Birm. Should that come in, we get that bid and decide between that and the street project that we would like to issue a bond yet this year. We can certainly do that. This is needed, though, before we start a project, just so that we've got that on record that we intend to reimburse ourselves at some point down the line. And this resolution is good for 18 months, so that would get us through the next year's street project, should you have that on the books. So, it's just kind of a bit of a cost-saving measure for us, but it also leaves all of our options open. And if you choose not to use it later, that's, it's okay, no harm, no foul, so. But you do have to do this before the project starts, so that's why we're requesting that this is done at this time.
I'll make a motion to accept a resolution for declaring intent of reimbursement for the bond process of 2025 street project.
I'll second the introduction of the resolution.
All right, the resolution has been introduced and seconded, and we're up for a roll call.
Nelson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Espen.
Great. Moving on, next we have the resolution proposing the street vacation and the preparation of notice. And this is regarding the alley between the old Smith Appliance Building and the property owned by Kevin Bistrick.
Yep, it's the alley between 8th Street and 9th Street, from the south line of 9th Street to the north line of the alley running from 3rd Avenue to 4th Avenue. It's right alongside of the USDA building on, on that block. At the public hearing you had for this said 2025 street project on May 6th, several of the property owners requested that the city consider vacating that alley. I believe it's a fairly narrow, is it 15 feet, John? About 15 feet down that alley. There's not a whole lot of access deliveries or things coming on that. There's not a lot of public purpose to it, other than for those building owners that are adjacent to that property. The Street Committee did meet and recommended that we start the vacation process, because it's a fairly lengthy process. So, to start the vacation of a street or an alley, it has to be done with either... Um, so to start the vacation of a street or an alley, it has to be done with either, um, a petition from fifty percent or more of the property owners, or the council may initiate a vacation proceeding. And so that's what this resolution is. Um, it does require four-fifths stat, four-fifths vote to pass. This is the first step, so if you approve this, this evening, then we'll prepare the public notice to go out, the letters to go out to the property owners that are impacted. And then we'll also set a public hearing date. You'll then have said public hearing and then take the next step after that. So this is really the first step in that process, and I believe it's recommended by the street committee.
I'll make the motion to, uh, accept the proposal for the street vacation.
And I'll second that and then have comment.
Okay. Well, are we, this is a resol, this is a resolution, so the resolution has been introduced and seconded. Comment now before we?
Discussion.
Okay. Here we go.
Okay. Um, as part of the street committee, when we met and talked about this, um, it is a narrow alley and you can, you know, get in from, um, both other sides, you know, to get in for the parking that is behind the businesses there. Um, but I think the best, um, or the benefit to this is when you're coming down, um, that would be Ninth Street, right on the square. Um, Ninth Street to the businesses on the square there is, uh, there could be more parking then, because if we fill in that, um, curb then, because with the alley right now, there's no parking because you have access to that alley. If we fill in that curb, I think we can gain two, possibly three, would you say, John? Um, three parking spots then there on the actual square. So I think that would really help the businesses over on that side of the square to have three additional parking spaces on that side of the square by filling in that alleyway, but it still doesn't hurt to anything, but you still have access to alley behind those businesses to get to the parking that's behind there. Uh, so that's why I was in support of it, because I like to have more parking on the square for the businesses on the square. So, uh, that's why I was in support of this resolution and looking at vacating that alley and preparing for notices in a public hearing.
Also speak to the business owner at Look Forward Wellbeing, and she is thrilled at the possibility of having more parking spaces, so I also think this was a smart move. Is there any other discussion on this from anyone? All right, roll call.
Sherman.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Esplin. Nelson.
Yes.
All right, that has gone through just well, and now we've got Tim Snyder with the Community Center to discuss the patio fencing.
Tim Snyder, Community Center Director. Um, before you, I have an action item, um, that the Community Center Commission and, and myself are recommending awarding the bid for finishing the existing fence around the patio, uh, to Brugman Fencing at a cost of six thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents. Um, we put out for bids for this project, and, uh, we kind of felt that his bid was the best, um, that we had coming into it. Um, I've already spoke with him and, uh, we're trying to get all this done and ready to go as we start into our busy time of the year uh, with weddings and all that. Um, part of the things that also came with that, um, by us finishing that existing fencing, um, the policy at the Community Center is that for alcohol purposes, nothing can go outside, but it can go on our patio. Well, we only have one side of the fence up, which was done, I believe, during the Daisy Jacobs, uh, donation, so this would, uh, finish the rest of that fencing around the patio and kind of keep it enclosed.
I'll make a resolution to accept the Community Center pant, pi, patio for fencing bid?
I'll second.
Motion made and second. Is there any discussion on this? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Perfect. Motion carries.
Mr. Schneider forgot the most important part about how you're gonna pay for it.
Oh, yes. We are going to pay for this out of, uh, we got a very generous donation from Bob Byers. Um, we got a couple of projects, actually, that we have planned to kind of spruce up that patio a little bit. Um, Daisy Jacobs started the first part of it. Um, this would probably help finish it. Plus, we still have some, uh, leftover funds for future, um, stuff that we plan on doing, so uh, this would be all covered under that buyer's donation.
Great. Thank you, Tim.
Yes, we're very thankful for the donor who, uh, was very generous, and, uh, we love stuff like this when people value our community and make just really great moves to beautify it.
Agreed. Well said, Jason. All right, up next is Kari Hanson, Library Director, to discuss roof re, roof replacement quotes and Saturday closure proposal.
Kari Hanson, Library Director. Uh, the library board and, um, the staff who recommend that the city council take the following action, accept the bid from Schrickerts to complete the roof repairs for Section A and B in the amount of thirty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars. Um, the library has capital improvement funds budgeted in twenty-five. I'm trying not to hiccup. Uh, they just hit me a few minutes ago. But so we have the money budgeted, um, for thirty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars for those repairs. So last fall, last summer, you know, Schrickerts, they, we have an annual roof, um, inspection. And this is based on the report from last summer. So. And we have the, the two bids, but we would like approval on Schrickerts.
I'll make a motion that we approve the roof repairs for the library.
I'll second it.
Motion made and second. Is there any further discussion?
I just got one question. Now, there was some, some brung up to my attention about some bricks being out of the chimney and stuff like that. Did you get up and look at that, Matt?
I, I haven't been up there.
Okay, 'cause, yeah. There's some bricks missing. I don't know if it was from the wall next to it or the chimney itself. Um, Mike Schwabach was, he brung it to my attention that, and he said, if they're gonna do their roof, they're gonna fix theirs. He said it would just be easy to fix all at one time. And I don't know if that was brung into it or not.
I, I don't believe it was.
Sch, Schrickerts don't do chimney repair.
No.
They don't. Okay, okay.
They have to find someone else to do that work.
Yeah, but maybe that's something we need to look into, because if you're gonna have repairs done up to it, and also have the bricks taken care of and so it's all done one time type of thing, but that's something different, I guess, so.
Is there any further discussion?
My only question is, you, were the report, or the bids from last summer or recently? And would they still be good now?
They are still good. I did check with them to see if there were any changes, and they said they would honor the bid from last, last summer. So.
Any questions or discussion from anyone else? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Okay. Second item, uh, the library board is recommending that the city council take the following action. Um, approve Saturday closures from Memorial Day to Labor Day. Um, we are currently short-staffed. We, uh, due to Nancy Sevan's resignation. Um, we have two regular staff members, myself and another part-time. And, uh, it's increasingly difficult or so we found, looking at the calendar for the summer, for us to cover, for the two of us to cover, um, every Saturday. So I checked with other libraries and thirteen of the twenty-six libraries in Plum Creek are currently closed on Saturdays during the summer. And most of them, they all are from Memorial Day to Labor Day. Um, and one of those conversations I had was with the library in Jackson, and there's three, three libraries that they have, Jackson here in Lake, in Lakefield, and they, um, have not been open for a Saturday in the summer for the last thirty-three years. So. And, you know, my, my library board knows this is not a recommendation that we make lightly. And we do believe and will strive for this to only be this one year, um, this summer. You know, we hired the two on-call staff and they've been coming in for training. Um, but they're just, if they're not ready yet to be left alone to open and close on a Saturday. So.
I'll make a recommendation to, to the Saturday closure proposal.
So motion made and second to approve this Saturday closure proposal. Is there any further discussion?
I'm just gonna say real quickly, uh, thank you, Kari, for, um, for letting us know as much as you can. Uh, and this is a difficult thing to staff, and it really does make sense, I think. And I just wanna, mm, thank you for your candor.
I'm just really sad, like, that, that's a really hard thing to, to say, to be closed. I mean, I understand, like, for school kids and people that, um, you know, can go Monday through Friday, but for people that can't get there Monday through Friday, you know, like, people that are, you know, to say that every Saturday all summer that the library wouldn't be open? Like, and I know your library, you know, they probably talked about all different options and things like that, but, um, you know, like, I'm, I'm just, you know, because this is the first I've heard of it, so I'm just thinking different scenarios and things, and I understand it's hard to train in to think that your new staff could, you know, be there by themselves, but I'm just thinking, like, the landfill, like, certain things where you just have, like, one designated Saturday a month that you'd be open, you know, if people knew that there was, whether it's the first Saturday in the month or the last Saturday, you know, like, just if there was one Saturday a month that we could, I mean, no, that, that's kind of hard if you're the only one that it is to say this would be the Saturday of every month throughout the summer that I'd be open, if that would even make a difference or not, but God, that's hard to really say that there'd be no Saturdays all summer that anybody could get into the library. I don't, I mean, I get a lot of stuff online, I understand, but I know that there's people that technology scares the bejesus out of them, and they're like, I want to go, or the people that are like, I physically want a book in my hand to read. But you are open, how late at night?
Till seven.
Till seven, so there are options. Okay. Okay. So I guess just try to highly push the hours that you're open later during the week, so that we can try to get people in that can get in during the week later, if we're not gonna have any Saturdays available. And then, like you said, we'll try to say that it's just gonna be this summer for these, you know, I just hate that. It's like, okay, we don't have a pool this summer, and now we don't have a library on Saturdays in summer. I just feel like we'd take away so many things and options that I hate to be the one to vote these kind of things, so that's, that's just the hard part of things. But I, I understand as well, for staffing needs.
Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next up is the declaration of surplus, the Island Park Log Cabin.
I can probably do that one, uh, John is here, but, uh, so the, uh, Log Cabin, you've talked about, uh, that at a couple of council meetings as well. Um, Fort Belmont and Jackson has expressed interest in getting it. Um, so in order to get this through our, um, codified process, uh, we have to declare the cabin as surplus. Um, we're going to help pay a little bit towards its removal. Um, monetarily, I mean, it doesn't really have a cash value. They're settlemental, historical value type of thing, but can't put a price tag on that. Uh, so we're estimating the value at less than five thousand, which then makes it a negotiated sale by contract. And so since Fort Belmont is a no, nonprofit and you've considered donating it to them, we would sell it, uh, according to our process for one dollar, um, to them. Uh, they have asked that they have until August first to come and get it. And that still correct, John? See, he's nodding yes, so. Um, so what this res, or this, uh, motion would be to declare the, um, log cabin as surplus and to approve the negotiated sale for a dollar to Fort Belmont.
I'll make the motion to declare the surplus for the Island Park Log Cabin and for the sale.
I will second.
Are you sure? You sound like you might have needed a minute to think about that. Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Wanted hour?
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. It is nice to see that coming along to resolution there. That's good stuff. Up next is hiring recommendations on the personnel end of things, and first up is Wyndham Community Center, which Tim Snyder will discuss the administrative assistant hiring.
Tim Snyder, Community Center Director. Uh, before I got another action item, um, the Community Center Commission Board and myself recommend the hiring of Jennifer Nauman for the position of administrative assist, assistant receptionist at a step five um, of the twenty twenty-five union wage scale, um, with a step increase after a six-month probationary period. Um, this position has been open since April fourteenth. Uh, we advertised for roughly three weeks. Uh, we had eight applicants. Um, four of the applicants met the criteria for the position of which interviews and reviews were scheduled. Um, she stood out as probably having the most experience um, and was the best applicant at this time. Uh, this was a very tough decision for us, as, uh, we had two of our commission uh, members on the interview team as well as myself, and they really, I mean, all three of them, it was a tough decision, and we kind of had a, a point system that we went by. Um, and Jennifer, definitely, uh, she came out on top, and we all agreed that she's probably the best for the job.
I'll make a motion to accept the hiring of Jennifer for the Community Center.
Second.
Motion made and second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Tim.
Tim, did you have a start date on there when?
Uh, next up is the seasonal employees for the summer park and rec programs.
Uh, Tim was here at the last meeting and told you to have a list of, uh, rec department seasonal help. I believe these are all rehires. Uh, the names are in the packet, uh, but they're Andrew, or Alex Fink, Drew Rothenberger, Anita Nell, Nielsen, Charlie Erickson, Colby Level, Jackson Joyce, Hayden Simmons, Charlie Huska, Cody Barfnet? Barfnet? Okay. And Tyler Mars.
I'll make a motion to accept the seasonal employee for summer park and rec programs.
Second that.
Motion made and second. Is there any discussion?
It's nice that we get the same people back year after year, so the training level is, is on top, so we don't have to spend a lot of time training, and they give the, the summer park and rec people a little break and help out the kids, so they're, they're right on, ready to go right off the bat, but.
All right, any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Uh, next up is the EDA Administrative Assistance Temporary Compensation Adjustment. Uh, Jason, you wanna take care of that for us?
Uh, yes, um, so, uh, we have found ourselves in need of a new EDA Director. And, uh, in that process, um, our Administrative Assistant, um, has done a ton of extra work. And, uh, over the course of time, there are many, uh, extra hours put in. And we, uh, felt the need to, um, be fair and to, uh, offer some fair compensation for the amount of time that was put in, um, and in such a crucial time as well. So that everything was running fairly smoothly, even still. And so, uh, that's what we talked about and the exact amount is, yeah, I, I forget that, it's like one-
One thousand one hundred thirty-nine.
Yes, yes, okay, thank you. So I would like to make a motion to, uh, accept this temporary compensation adjustment for the EDA Administrative Assistant.
And that was the amount that's, uh, shown in the memorandum of understanding that we have with the IBW Union. So that's the, that's the document that we'll need to approve as the MOU.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion made and second. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, I would just like to say that our, um, Administrative Assistant, uh, for, um, EDA, like, that, that position does a lot. I mean, I don't think people realize how much is done within that position. Um, and besides just doing the regular Administrative Assistant work, that person really helps with getting the new EDA person on board. And, you know, it's almost like they almost help to train in the new EDA person and get them up to speed on what's all happening and all the different things going on within the city. Uh, they just have all the knowledge and all the connections and really, um, help. So it's like, even though that they're the assistant, they really help get that new, new EDA Director in the right path and on the right track. So they kinda train in almost the EDA. So, uh, I think that our assistant just goes above and beyond. I mean, all our workers do go above and beyond and that is expected is to help out your person. But when you have this transition period and really, like, when you don't have a person in the job and you really need to, somebody's gotta pick up the pieces and we can't expect that Steve have to do ev- everything. I mean, like, he, there are certain things, yes, but there are some things that, like, if nobody does it, things can't run in the city, like, there, there are things that just, somebody's gotta do it, you know? And I feel bad that our person just has, has had to take over things that definitely shouldn't have been, things that, that position had to take on, but they did have to. And so this is where we're left and there had to have been some kind of compensation for having to do things that you really shouldn't have had to do during that time. So I'm glad that she was able to step up and do that. And this, this is, I guess, the way that we can help to compensate for that. And it, like I said, it just was kind of abo- above and beyond what we would expect an assistant to have to do during that time period. So thank you. Um, hopefully it won't be for too long. Hopefully we will find an EDA Director to step into that role. And then we can get back to a somewhat normal life again.
To say one more thing, uh, I, I personally appreciate Mary. Um, but, uh, this in no way has, uh, even been hinted at from Mary. This is something that came apart from Mary and, uh, we just wanna do the right thing.
Yeah, I think that was one thing we discussed that she would not ask for anything like this. And Mary is, we've already seen action from the EDA at the meeting, so I'm thrilled she's being compensated for this. It's a big job. I have offered, call me if you need help, but Mary knows all there is to know. And I'm just glad to see this, this happening and, and coming through. And hopefully it is very temporary. And does anyone else have any more discussion on that? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Up next is new business. Who's got new business?
Me?
Okay. Let's start with discussion on this branch cleanup, on the storm cleanup. We had a big windstorm come through. Um, I took lots of questions today about branches, but, uh, these crews were out all night, all day, have done fantastic. There shouldn't be a bunch more branches left out there. Thank you, Street Department, Utility Department, whoever else helped out. You guys did a great job. Um, but there are some small branches in yards and I guess I am not quite sure what you guys have done before, how that's worked, so I think it's worthy of discussion.
I'd like to make comments on that. In the years past, we've had, you can bring out your branches, the small branches, not whole trees. Don't go to the neighbors, cut down everybody's tree and bring it out to the boulevard, just the small branches. And especially your elderly people, if you, they got a tree or limb hanging or something, don't make them guys get up on a ladder 'cause I'm old and I don't like ladders myself, but just try to help them guys out and don't abuse this. 'Cause if you abuse it, we will not do it again. The last time we did it is when we had the wind, the ice storm. And it worked out good for us citizens, 'cause some of us don't have pickups, we don't have trailers to haul stuff out. So the smaller branches, bring them out to the curb. I would say by Tuesday, if, if we can set work, John? Okay, by Tuesday, that gives you all weekend to pick things up. And so. Yeah, I believe so, yeah. John's nodding his head, so if it ain't out there by Tuesday, you're stuck with it. So like I said, not whole trees, no, not, 'cause they've done enough and there's, they got a big enough pile, but smaller branches and stuff in the backyards or in the side yard. So help each other out like we do around here to take care of that stuff. Again, do not abuse it, please.
Yeah, is there delineation? Would you say six foot, six to eight foot lengths, okay? Nothing over twelve feet. No, it's six to eight feet, six to eight feet. Yeah, how many items? Down to ten? Ten items? Ten, ten branches, folks, ten branches, no. Just kidding.
That, that reminds me of some other business. Now you're, okay, let's take care of this first, yes.
Okay, so are we talking that we would like the Electric and Street Department to hopefully, uh, look at going out starting on Tuesday, May twenty-seventh to pick up? Is that what the council's looking at?
Yes, I would say, 'cause it worked out good today for both those people to work together to get-
Or any other city departments that would like to volunteer to help after the holiday.
I, I think that's what we would do is ask for some volunteers. I know Electric guys have projects of their own as well, so we would ask for some volunteers, yes.
So any other, any other city departments that would like to volunteer when they come back after their holiday weekend break on Tuesday, May twenty-seventh to, uh, come out and pick up? So all the city residents, um, would put out their items. And again, this would be city, just city of resident tree branches, not outside of the city limits bringing trees in. And not cutting any other things in your yard to put in your front yard either. Just storm damaged branches, not time to trim your trees or bushes or anything else in your yard and put out in the front either. And no garbage, no appliances, no tires, no, no glass, no mirrors. But yeah, so did, do we need to make a motion on this then?
Make a motion to accept the branch, do we clean, clean up?
I would second for Tuesday, May twenty-seventh deadline of having your six to eight foot length maximum on your curb by Tuesday, May twenty-seventh for pickup.
So I guess that's just what, so they'll bring to the boulevard, you'll pick up on the boulevards by, like, what time will you start that morning? Okay, by seven AM. Nothing in the alleys. Must be on the boulevard, six to eight foot length of storm damaged branches of city of Wyndham residents that are six to eight feet in length from this last storm on May nineteenth. I think, I hope that people will just be, I mean, I've seen a lot of people picking up today. I hope that people will be good about it. If I am allowed to, I think I'm gonna come and help that day, just to get a feel for it and check things out. Good point. So residents can also take their own debris to the Cottonwood County landfill and, um, maybe we can do some posting about that and after we verify. Does anyone know for sure if it's ten dollars a load to bring to the landfill or if branches are free? I'll find that out, but, um, what's that? Branches are not free, okay, so we'll find out the cost on that for residents. But if they're in a super big hurry and want to free up the city to let these guys get other jobs done, they're welcome to bring it to the landfill themselves. Did we cover all of the details? Anything else?
Just wanted to clarify that it's not the residents who are sixty-eight feet long, but the branches themselves.
I might have misworded that, sorry about that. All right, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And thank you, John and everyone, for being willing to do that and for all of your work last night. That was big jobs, lots of branches out there, killed it. Okay, next under new business, does, well, I would like to talk about the parade. Um, we have been asked to be in the Riverfest Parade. Um, Scott mentioned it. I know the council was in the parade last Riverfest. And then I did hear from the Chamber Director this morning. Um, I have some paperwork here that just gives the details on it. You guys can each read. The parade is Saturday, June fourteenth at six PM. The lineup starts at four thirty. Um, does anyone know right offhand, yes or no, that they are interested in being in the parade? Dennis?
We can, yeah.
You can? Good.
I think so, but I'm not positive yet.
Okay. Jim, you think, I mean, I think we can all think about it. Scott is interested, I know it, he had mentioned it. I don't know if you, are you around Jenny? Okay. So maybe if everybody can think about it and if it's okay to let me know by Friday? Yeah. Unless anybody has any other, I feel like time is kind of of the essence and we're not gonna be able to, like, design a float or anything, but maybe.
I was, I was just wondering if there would be any way we could borrow one of the city trucks with the trailer behind it? So we can sit on the tra- trailer? Could that be an option for us or?
I think probably what I should do is check with our insurance provider and our city attorney, just to make sure we're good. But, like, a utility or a street vehicle that has the logo on the side of it. And maybe a trailer would be a viable option, but I just wanna make sure that we're good with it across the board and.
Or even a dump truck, we could dump it out, but no, 'cause I'm not running this year.
If you wanna ride with the branches.
Six to eight feet branches.
Hey, that's not a bad idea, then, I mean, actually.
So that's what I was thinking when you texted me earlier and I said I don't have a CDL. That's what I was talking about, was a dump truck.
So if we could all think about that, let me know by Friday. Um, if we, I mean, it sounds like there's enough interest that we could get this paperwork in, correct? I mean, I'm, I'm interested. I might be a last minute, but if somebody else is, can be there and get things going and maybe we can, we'll figure out. The theme is, is land of ten thousand, town of ten thousand flags, so it's easy to decorate. I'll give Steve this paperwork to fill out so we can turn in and. Yeah, the chamber's selling flags and we can figure out candy. Do we need to discuss anything else on that?
That, that is on your own.
Candy's on her own, okay, that's fine. Anything else about that, that we need to? Okay. Oh, I saw you guys threw candy last year.
I threw candy and ran really hard.
Okay.
But no, we, we can work on that, yeah.
Candy, if you want, on your own, we'll, we'll figure that out. Uh, do we need a motion or anything about that? Okay. Any other new business for anybody?
I'd like to bring up some business about the, the cleanup. Now, the date has been and it came and passed. If you still have a pile out in front of your house or in your yard somewhere where the wind hasn't blown it all over town already, please pick it up, 'cause it's, they already probably went through and picked their ten pieces out of there and it's done. So if you or your neighbor or somebody down the block has a pile there, pick it up, 'cause as of Saturday, it's done. So if it still is in your yard, it's considered, can be considered littering and you can get a citation for it. So we're not, I'm not saying we're gonna run out and start throwing tickets on everybody, but if it's out there and starts blowing around, you are liable for that stuff, the debris and everything else blowing, blowing around the town. And we gotta know with the parade coming up and with the Riverfest coming up, we don't need to be picking up other people's stuff. So if, if you do have a pile or somebody else has a pile, go remind them very nicely, say, we have to pick this up and take it to the landfill or wherever you wanna put it. But it has to come off the boulevards, 'cause it's, it's no longer part of the cleanup. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good point. And graduation is coming too, and we know we'll have visitors in from out of town and, um, sometimes I think it just is, we might just have to, like you said, go to your neighbors. I mean, I went to my neighbors on last week, 'cause I didn't know that they were aware of the rules and they weren't at all. And they were thrilled that, um, to get a heads up, so. I mean, you'd think people would see that it's passed, but I don't know, a reminder would just be good with Riverfest coming and graduation to just take some pride in our town and, and get that cleaned up, even if we have to help other people to do that. Any other new business? Or old business? Council comments, anyone?
I always got one. Again, take care of your neighbors, help the elderly out and if, with the garbage or the trees or just help them spruce up their yard. If you notice their yard's getting a little longer and grass, mow the grass. Or if you have a, a vacant lot or somebody down there and nobody's mowing the grass, take some time and go mow it if you got time. Um, and, and a reminder with you, I have to, you do have to mow your grass. If it's getting over a foot long, it is time to start mowing your grass. I know mo- no mow May is over with, so we're into, well, give me a couple more days and then, but then, then we're gonna have to start mowing, 'cause it is with the weeds and, uh, the allergies and stuff like that. People just, it, it does look, makes your town look a little trappy, but take care of each other like we do around Wyndham. When the storm came out, you seen everybody out helping each other and all the neighbors out. And I wanna give heads up to our departments, uh, the city staff of Wyndham. When this stuff hits Wyndham, we all band together and they all work together so well. And they're tired. They are very tired right now, 'cause they've been at it for a long time, all night long, helping people out, getting trees down, getting the roads open, so we can drive up and down our streets. And I wanna say thank you to all the people that helped out with a lot of that stuff and keep each other safe, 'cause we got trees down, we got limbs down and we got power lines. We don't want nobody getting hurt out there, so take care of each other. Thank you.
Do you have a council comment, Jenny?
Yes, um, I would just like to congratulate our, all our area graduates. And I would like to remind them that we have plenty of, uh, job opportunities within the city of Wyndham and around our local area. Uh, whether you're graduating and looking for a job now or whether you're going off to a trade school and wanna come back and have a job in our local area, whether you're going off to a four-year college, reminder that come on back home. Um, and also when you find friends at college- Um, and also when you find friends at college, talk about Wyndham or surrounding communities. And invite them to come to Wyndham and tell them about all the great job opportunities to come back to our community.
Dennis, do you have any council comments? Jason, do you have council comments?
I also want to congratulate all of the grads of twenty twenty-five, I've had many of them in class over the years. And some of them, uh, recognize me and I don't recognize them, cause they grown up so much over the last years. Um, just wanna say that, and, uh, I'm excited about summer being here, um, I think spring finally is here for good, maybe. I will see you next day or so, and, um, hope you all have a good week.
Jim has no council comments, Steve, do you have anything to add?
I would like to add that, um, a while back, we heard from Ava Van Norman and part of her. She was just starting her Eagle Achievement Project that was to put flags up around the square, and her, I heard from them today. And Ava is going to place the flags around the square on Thursday. And they, uh, were also able to extend it out a block, so they should be by like the police station in Higley Ford, a block all the way around the square. She will put up fifty-two flags on Thursday to be in place by Memorial Day weekend, um, and they have. Put the brackets up, everything's in place, um, they cut all of the flag poles and they each have gold eagles on top. And they're all brand new flags, so it's really gonna look sharp, so, um, if anyone sees Ava Van Norman. Ava Van Norman, thank you for your efforts for this, I can't wait to see it, and that's all I have for now, so that can. What? Yes, so that concludes council comments, but not the meeting, because we now will start the city facilities tour. And when we're finished at the library, Wyndham net and the emergency services facility, then we will come back and adjourn, so off we go.